Justin, can you tell me your last name?
H E A T H G R.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the tax increment reinvestment zone number one. We're at City Hall Council of Chambers. It is 5:32 February the 14th. Thank you very much for the board being present and those of you on our design team consultants and others, Main Street that's here and city staff that helps us. Thank you very much for being here. Would you do the roll call for us?
Yes, Mr. Justin Heather.
Here.
Mr. Riazulmia.
Here.
Mr. Jose Castillo.
Here.
Mr. Orlando Navarro.
Here.
Mr. Jose Zavayos.
Here.
And Mr. Wilfredo Martinez. He will be out today. And Ms. Carol Alexander.
And she contacted me that she needed to be out today. I make motion that we excuse Ms. Alexander and also Mr. Martinez.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Navarro, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any against? None, motion passes. I wanna welcome Justin Heather to the board. I appreciate you, you know, joining us. I know that, you know, you all are very involved. The organization you work for is very involved downtown and in other places. So I think you provide a perspective that's gonna be very valuable going forward. And I think that as we get to the turning of dirt with our projects, I think your expertise will be very valuable as well. Your personal expertise beyond what you do for the company you work for. Do you wanna just introduce yourself for the record?
Thank you, yes. Justin Heather, been a lawyer for 20 years. And prior to moving to Laredo, I ran economic development for the state of Illinois for about six and a half years. Honored to be here and look forward to it.
Great, thank you so much. So we have a very light agenda today. Obviously, it's Valentine's Day, so I will not be the obstacle that prevents you from going home quickly from this meeting. It's, like I said, a very light agenda, so I wanna make sure we move everybody forward before anybody gets in trouble. All right, so with that said, item number three is minutes. Approval of minutes for January 10th, 2023. Those are in your packets.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no corrections to be made, I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
It's been moved to approve. Is there second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Castillo, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any against? None, motion passes. Thank you very much. Item four, citizens' comments. Citizens are required to fill out a witness part. No later than 5:45 PM. Those can be found here at City Hall. The chambers, comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. No more than three persons will be allowed to speak. On any side of an issue, speakers may not pass their minutes to any other speaker. Comments should be relevant to city business and delivered in a professional manner. No derogatory remarks will be permitted. Anybody here to make a public comment? All right, so they still have time to 5:45, so leave that open. Moving on to presentation items, no action to be taken on this item. This is a standing item that we added some time back. Discussion on any downtown-related effort or activity of board members' interest or concern. So, Mr. Heather, anything that you think, you know, is not on the agenda and in between meetings you think that we need to talk about, you can always bring that up. It won't be for action, but, you know, that's open to you and any member. If you think of something ahead of the meeting and the agenda is already posted, you can always add that in the board and discuss it. Is there anything that this board wants to bring up?
I did wanna talk about our trip to Austin. And we visited with the historic commission. And specifically to talk about the Plaza Theater and the Webb Federal Building, the older one. And they didn't have much other than tax credits. But the problem is, tax credit can only be given to a private investor that's working at, not to a municipality. So that's gonna be a headache moving forward because we own both. The city of Laredo owns both Plaza Theater and the Federal Building. So we have to kind of consider that when we're going out for funds, like where we can get funds because we don't have the ability to take advantage of the credits. So I just thought I'd throw that out there because we did. The Franks were there, they presented. Mr. Juan Chamas was there, he presented. And it was just information, we were trying to look for funding for these. And so that was something that came up. So it's something to keep in mind. I thought I'd just share that with them.
Yeah, I think you mentioned the public-private partnership idea, whether to operate it or whatever, you know, construct something that can, where you can leverage the private sector. I think that point is very well made.
Or some kind of campaign to save the bell tower or whatever, you know. We gotta consider something.
Right, right. Dr. Fisher, you wanna come up to the podium and make a comment?
Hello, Dr. Marcela Oribe, for the record. Very important point. One of the things that we learned at the trip to Austin was effectively like if you have a public entity only trying to get tax breaks or taxes, sorry, from, they're not available. But one of the things that they discussed with us is that if you have a nonprofit organization, if you have a contract with a nonprofit or even a for-profit, they will be able to grant some of those tax credits. So, I mean, as you know, Laredo Main Street is a nonprofit organization and we will be happy to work with the city and to handle whatever. I mean, we could, but it's a possibility. And I think it's worth to explore further for these type of projects. So, I mean, I just want to add to the comment.
All right, thank you very much for that comment.
Thank you.
The other bit of advice is I did see that the library is reopening downtown, so I think that's great news for a constituency that maybe has been asking for that. I think that'll spur some more traffic into the downtown area and help bring back some constituents to that facility. Anything else that you all wanna discuss on this particular item?
If you guys need doggone aid and efforts, the city was awarded a Section 108 loan for the rehabilitation of the Southern Hotel through the Community Development Department. So I don't know if you all heard, we did put a press release out, so just so you all know that that will also change a little bit of the storefront or the building facade on the 1,200 block of Matamoros.
Kina, can you speak to the timeline for that project?
So we are hoping to be, and we're still working on the timeline since we got, there's still some financial stuff that we will have to do on our end of the city to accept, to sign documents. But we are hoping to be bidding out the project for rehab already. The construction documents are about 95% done. We had been doing it purposely while we were applying for these funds. So the next step is to bid it out and hopefully award. I would say in the next four to five months. We would wanna be under construction by, before the year ends.
And that's probably a year and a half worth of construction.
Correct, yes. It's a three-story building, very historic, very need of a lot of, you know, renovation rehab. So it will be take. Kind of cornered to that, 820 Convent took us about a year and a half, but I know COVID, you know, had an impact on that timeline. So we're, I mean, we're using the same timeline, so we're hoping that a year and a half.
Yeah, when we did Bethany House, both two or three times that we had projects there, the last one, the Center for Hope Rent, is two years. And just because we were on Edango Street. You have staging area, I say you, but the city has staging area next door.
Yes.
So you don't have to deal so much with the traffic. But anything downtown that has a street on it, which most properties do, without a parking lot, you're gonna have an extended timeframe. Well, good, that's certainly good news for the downtown. Any other comments? Hey, there being none, I'll just roll on ahead to the action items. Action item number six, update presentation discussion if possible action related to the turds number one ongoing improvement, design work and elements pursuant to the public events, community engagement events of January 17th and 18th this year, as may be required or requested by the design team. So this has become our standing item while we roll out or get to construction documents. I'll let the design team members come up. Before they speak, I'd like to thank the different players that make those two events possible. Certainly, the turnout could have been better, but still, you know, we know that sometimes fine-tuning dates and events, just you can't, you don't ever, you can't ever do it to get people, particularly during busy days and business season, get out there. But I think that particularly the Iturbide event was well-attended. I think we got a lot of input from the folks that were there. All kinds of input, both constructive in terms of what was being presented, but also constructive in terms of the approach. Even folks that maybe had some things to say about the process were being made part of the process by them being there. So it's kind of like, sometimes you wanna be more engaged, but then you're already at the event where the purpose is to engage you. So I think we achieved some of that. We heard a lot about areas outside the scope of this board, which is not a bad thing to hear. But in terms of the actual drawings and designs and concepts that were being presented, I think we got sufficient input. When we really look at each block, beyond the folks that were there, the blocks where the bulk of the work is gonna be, I think we've really engaged the property owners directly and fully. And the team and this board is still open to take input at any point until we get this thing bided. Even then, you know, once it comes back for an award, you know, there'll be an opportunity to include any committee member that has some constructive, positive adjustments to our plan. So I wanna thank Main Street for leading in that effort. Able City, KCI for doing the work and fine-tuning the elements that were presented and the drawings and the boards that were presented. And the city for helping us coordinate that as well. So I wanna thank all of you all for the effort and appreciate the work. So with that, I'll leave it to Rick and Edward to give us any updates.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Chairman Rick Solis with Able City. Joined by Edward Ochoa with KCI. We just wanted, we have a very, very brief presentation. Where is it? Sorry, I'm looking for.
I think you have to maximize the screen first. Oh, there you go.
Mr. Chairman, being that it's 5:45, I'd like to close citizens' comments.
All right, just for the record, we're now closing citizens' comments.
So as Chairman mentioned, we did have our public awareness events, is what we were calling them, on the January 17th and 18th. January 17th was the Saragossa event that we had at the outlets. I think based on the sign-in sheet, we probably had about 15 people or so attend, 15 to 20 people attend that event. The following night was the Iturbide event. We had more than that, you know, probably closer to 30 people at that event. I would say that at the first event, it was, since we're really only looking at that one block of Saragossa Street, I think the comments were more engaged. We did have people, representatives from Ueta who owned property on that street. And we have some exhibits to kind of show some of the comments that they had and that our KCI has already implemented into their design plans. The Iturbide was more about issues related to things, like you mentioned, that are beyond the scope of what we were hired to do. Namely, parking was sort of like the big hot button issue, that there's not enough parking and you're taking away our parking. We did go back and look and we have a slide that kind of shows how we're addressing that right now. You know, lots of comments regarding what can we do to make it better? You know, we had some people say, maybe we create a designated area for the Uber people to come pick up people at the end of the night. Or maybe we can have a shuttle that takes people from the outlets. They can park down there and come down to Iturbide Street. So a lot of talk about the management district too and sort of revamping those items as well. So it really was a very engaging conversation. A lot of it really wasn't related to the drawings on hand, but I think it was good to kind of get people engaged and having them be able to express themselves in a forum that people were there to listen. So with that said, we'll just go through these slides and then we can sort of address any questions that anybody may have at that point. So Edward, if you wanna go through this.
Edward Ochoa again with KCI. I'll kind of take over and go through some of the slides. So what we did is we put together a couple of the public awareness comments that were kind of design-related, so that we kind of depict what we've done and what the question was. So this first one that you see there, the Ueta property owners, which they own their mid-block on that Saragossa block between Convent and Salinas. So their mid-block on the north side. They also have some property kind of on the western end. But specifically in their main location here, mid-block, their comment was regarding keeping a driveway ramp and getting less trees in front of their building. So just with the pointer, I'll kind of use it here. So currently, they have a doorway right here, kind of on the left side of their building. And there is, this portion right here is kind of like a driveway ramp, kind of goes down. And they've got a curb cut on the existing curb line right in here. So we met with them, spoke with them, and they were like, well, we don't need a whole wide driveway 10 feet, as long as we can ramp something up into there. So the agreement that we had with them is we'll basically just put essentially what would look like a handicap ramp, an ADA ramp. It'll be about five feet wide. And we will give them a curb cut on our new curb line here. So what you see here is, we've already drawn it up. And so this will be a curb cut. And then this will be essentially a ramp up to the sidewalk level up in here. And then what we did was typically when you have a ramp, you'll have kind of wings that kind of help transition that slope back up. So what we did in this case is, this line here is basically a wing on this side. But on this side, instead of a wing, we just brought the tree right up on it. So it allows us to not have to use that space for the wing. Kind of helps make some efficient use of space. And it'll also serve as kind of the transition for the ramp. So that allows us to put a tree there. And then going kind of to the second part about having less trees, the presentation we had had three trees. Basically, had one here in the middle and they're like, as long as we're okay with the trees, we just kind of want a little bit of a more view of our building. So we removed one of the trees here and just pushed these trees on the two ends. So we've already addressed, again, you can see there, we've already addressed our comment in our 60% plan development, which is where we're at right now. Then, oops. The next slide was, this is a property owner to the right or to the east of the Ueta building. This particular property owner has a ramp transition in their foundation inside the building. It's a little bit hard to see in the picture. But we went out there, I think it was on the day of the first public awareness. And the property owner or the property, the business owner had the business open. So we went and we took some measurements. And so what you can see in here is the actual finished floor, the actual foundation, flat part of the building inside, is at an elevation of 409.4. And then the edge of the door is 408.66. And then the edge of this little concrete right here is 408.23. So he's got about a foot and two inches, about 14-inch drop from the inside of their foundation to the outside. And we spoke with the property owner and the business owner, but the property owner more importantly. And he had indicated that they had ramped that a while back. And they're more than happy to make those adjustments to their building, which would allow us to clean up some of the sidewalk and some of the gray differences that we were having on the outside. So that's what the building looks like. Again, here, you can see the comment was, "Address elevation differences inside the building to facilitate ADA-compliant sidewalk design on the outside." And.
How far back does that ramping go?
It was probably about eight feet. So it's kind of, it's not a real steep ramp inside their foundation. They kind of brought it in decent enough, but it definitely ramps up.
He's willing to break that and lower it?
Correct, we had a discussion with him. He's willing to break that out. Actually, what he'd do is break that out and fill it up. So he's gonna raise it so that the face of the door will be the same elevation as the rest of the flat part of the foundation, right? So we spoke to him a little bit, and, you know, he'll have to raise that. He'll have to take the door off and, you know, shift the door frame up.
He's lower inside?
He's higher inside. He's higher inside by about, probably about nine inches to the door frame and then about 14 inches to the outside. So we met with him, spoke to him. He was very willing. We told him if we can get some cooperation with this in the inside, we can remove some gray differences on the outside that we originally had. So again, kind of the drawing, it ends up doing this now. At one time, and his door, that door you were looking at was right here. So at one time, we actually had kind of another gray change right about here, about mid-sidewalk or mid, you know, porch or whatever. So now by doing what he does in the inside, it'll allow us to have a complete flat section here, which you can see by this dimension is almost 10 feet. It's about nine and a half feet. So he'll have a nine and a half-foot, you know, flat porch, you know, essentially in front. So that was another comment that we got that we've addressed already. Another comment that we got that we looked into already is there were concerns regarding the amount of parking spaces that will be eliminated. And this was more, again, as Rick mentioned on the, at the Iturbide meeting, they were kind of talking about, well, with these improvements, what's the parking count like? We already have parking spaces here. So that was kind of the discussion. So we came back and we analyzed the three main blocks that we're redoing on Iturbide Street. The first block being the most eastern block, Santa Ursula to San Bernardo. Currently, we've counted up about eight parking spaces. And currently, those eight are on both sides. So the north side or the east or the right side, as you're driving down Iturbide, has four parking meters. There's two in the front end and then two on the very end. And then the other four spots that we're counting are on the south side or left side of the road, right in front of the homes. And we counted that you could fit about four there. So with those four and four, you get a total of eight right now. Our design that we're currently working on, at this point, we show six. So you would lose essentially two on that block. On the second block, Iturbide, between San Bernardo and San Agustín, that's in front of the J.C. Twists building. Currently, there's 12 existing parking spaces and we're showing 13 on our design. So we're actually adding a space there. Then on the third block, which is in front of the main, the bars block, you know, San Agustín de Flores, currently, there's 20 parking spaces there. And at the end, we would be left with 19. And that really, that one is because we're adding a tree on the south side. So by adding that tree, it, you know, essentially loses about a space. So as you can see, you know, we're doing our very best to kind of minimize the impact of parking spaces. And we'll continue to fine-tune that as we finalize our design. If there's any place that we can gain more space, we will try our best to do so.
Are you introducing the whole Uber dedicated or right-sharing dedicated space or dedication?
Not, not at this time. I know that was kind of a discussion about doing that. I think that might need to be a further discussion about whether or not we do that specifically maybe on these three blocks or maybe somewhere else, you know, in the downtown area.
I know that's been brought up before, that notion that we don't have a dedicated spot.
Yeah, they were saying that some of them will tend to go a little bit further down the street where there's a little bit less traffic. Some of them will, I think one of the comments was they'll walk over down San Agustín to Grant and they'll kind of find a place over there. But I think that's maybe something that could be discussed further down the road about maybe a dedicated parking lot or maybe some dedicated spaces for Uber. And maybe it's, you know, during a certain time period, you know. My personal opinion is, you know, maybe looking at a loading-unloading zone that's not being used after hours, that maybe could be dedicated for, you know, something like that. But that's, then we can look into that further.
Vienna Frank, Able City, for the record. There is also a possibility that on Saragossa Street that we talk to the city of Laredo about perhaps using the taxi area also for Uber. And since it's essentially doing the same thing. And perhaps there's a way of, at least on Saragossa Street, to have a landing spot there.
Okay, that's a good idea. So I was gonna say, and not in defense, but just as a comment. So the blocks where we're losing a few spots more than one, we actually have city parking lots, right? So even though you're losing on the street, you have the bridge parking lot at the 800 block of Iturbide. And then the 900, you've got the one next to House of Whiskey, that building. So I think you still are winning on top of, you know, some blocks don't have any city parking nearby.
Do you want to mention?
Sure. So there's actually a kind of a little goldmine of parking that's, that can become available if we follow what was suggested in the parking plan and for the downtown area. So the area around the Center for the Arts can have diagonal head-in parking like it used to have in the 40s and the 50s and the 60s and 70s. And then it changed. And so there, it's an easy fix. And it, you know, I don't know if you would like to have us look at a possibility of adding that. It's nearby, it's literally on the same line as everything is at San Agustín. And it certainly would add a lot of parking.
I mean, personally, I would like for us to look at that or someone look at it from our expanded group. If the city traffic department could look at it, that could also be good. The other thing that I think we should drop is the.
Purpose.
Forget the pun, the drop-off zones. I think that concept that you all brought, you know, I hadn't really thought about that. I think that can be also very critical if we develop a system. Because my notes too, like the removal of traffic signs, there's a lot of things that are gonna be happening in the next year or two. So I think studying that, that those other parking solutions would be good too. So I'm for that unless, Mr. Bev, you think some other department could hit that up? You know, they could, but.
I know, Mr. Chairman, we need to look at the parking again. So I will ask parking, see how we can do it. And another area is, we look at it, is at the San Agustín Plaza. If you look at the Flores Street, people are already using for parking because the people cross from the bridge. And that street is wide. We can also do angle parking there, maybe the drop-off center there. Because that street is huge, it's huge.
So at the very least, I think we could, if you would like, we could do a little sketch as to have the discussion started.
Does the board wanna entertain that motion to instruct the team to look at San Agustín and the Center for the Arts Plaza?
Well, I don't think it's, that's necessary in the sense to do that because we, the streets already, if you look at the curb, the curb is already pushed back. It used to have dive-in parking, that was just taken away. So there's no work to be done other than to get them to go out there and strike. Bottom line. So if we just get the okay.
It was that easy.
But the issue is not that you have to break out.
It's just a sketch to show parking.
Yeah, how many we could get.
How many we could gather.
I mean, I say it just, but I mean, I wish we could just do that and activate the parking that way, but it probably needs to involve the traffic department. But you all are the city. And well, we got the support of planning for sure.
Already asked, so we're, yeah. This is a discussion that's been had already. But yes, we can do that just so they can see how many parking spaces we can get out of it.
Mr. Castillo, any thoughts on?
Nope.
So I'll make the motion that we asked. So I'll make the motion that we asked our design team to bring back the recommendation on those two plazas for parking, and then hand it over to Mr. Mier to lead on, and Mr. Noado as well to lead on the, or lean on the departments that can make it work or make it happen.
It's seconded.
It's been seconded by Mr. Mier, any additional discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any against? None.
So just, just one other item that we have. We still are pending to meet with a few of the city departments. We've already reached out, I already spoke to, to the marshal with the fire department, and they're available next week, so maybe we can get them and Ramon in the same meeting so that we can kind of facilitate that. I know that you were going to contact...
Correct, yeah, we're working on getting something set up with traffic department for next week. Idea, I mean, it's a good point, Rick, ideally, it'd be nice to have maybe all three together, that'll just save us some steps, but if we have to meet individually, we're, we're fine with that. We're applying to meet individually if we have to, but if we can maybe get everybody in the room together, that would facilitate a more efficient meeting.
Okay.
Just let me know, I'll set up the meeting.
Okay, we can do that.
I was going to say, maybe invite the board without having a core, maybe a couple of people can attend, if you, and you're okay with that?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
So I wanted to bring up a couple of things that, that were, that were brought up that I thought were a little more complicated than just doing during the Iturvida meeting. The idea of bringing power and sewer to the curb. I think power is relatively easy, once we have a, a, a public source or the source, but I think the sewer is a little more complicated, so I think we probably should talk through that, or you guys talk through that with the departments involved, because I think, I, I think it makes a lot of sense for our downtown community to ask for that. It just creates a whole bunch of opportunities for vendors and even them to move some of the operation out, to create more community engagement and bring a different stakeholder. But I, I know it's complicated to do that, right? And so I, I don't want to ignore that comment, because I thought it's, seems real easy to do, but I know it's real complicated from a utility side, from us, even the service side, where you have grease, potentially grease traps, all these other things that come into play where, where you're providing that. I don't know if you all have some thoughts on that?
I mean, I'm the utility guy, I guess. My, my thoughts on it, I, I mean, I, I remember somebody bringing that comment of, and you're, I think you're referring more to the, the parklets kind of a concept, right? You know, allowing for people to use the parking, maybe parking spaces during the, during the night or whatever, parklet situation. But from my experience in, in, you know, visiting, you know, New York about a year ago, I don't recall if their parklets were set up with sewer. Power, yes, but I don't recall if they were set up with sewer. Like, we just need to think about kind of what the use would be. Sewer, I think, in my personal opinion, would be a little more complicated to handle, kind of like what you mentioned, you know, you're talking grease traps and such.
Or, you know, even... Water is different, though.
Oh, so I think...
Like sink, as opposed to...
Yeah, so I mean, and, and, and Ria ran the utility department, so he probably knows how this could even happen, but teeing off from, let's say, the, you know, House of Whiskey site, teeing off from there, I mean, it's, it's not complicated, right? But you plug up that line, who services it, you know, that kind of deal, those are, I don't know, Mr. Mier, have you got any comments about how that potentially could happen?
And the water is the easy thing. The sewer, the problem is the moment you open it, you, you're bringing a smell issue, because that's why you have the trap. In our home, we have the trap, and every bathroom, we have the trap, but to have an open connection, I mean, that's going to be really, really difficult.
We know over cities have done that before.
For bathrooms, like, city of San Antonio, oh, sorry, Austin, has done bathrooms, like public bathrooms, in fact, just recently, that they bring in, and it's not like the, it's like a very simple solution to a public bathroom, but not for restaurants. If something like a gray water, like going into the gray water, that's a, that's kind of different, and in terms of using it for, you know, throwing, throwing out oil or anything like that, I don't think that, I don't, I think that's going to get really expensive, because they're going to have to put a grease trap underneath, they're good at service.
Yeah, I agree.
And so they can do that, if they have a restaurant on the inside, they can do that. Now, there's other possibilities in terms of, you know, really, the answer is food trucks, but is that something that we want to invite when it comes to, because food trucks are built for all of that, and, but I, I don't think we're talking about that when we're talking about perplex, right? So they're more permanent.
Well, I just, I want to make sure we have a discussion on it.
But we can get, we can get as much information to move us in one direction or the other there.
Yeah. So I guess, kind of picking back, picking back on that discussion, I have a meeting set up with AEP for this Thursday, so two days from now, 10:00 AM. So I'm going to meet with them to initiate kind of the utility coordination aspect that we talked about at last meeting, and getting them set up with that. So I'll, I'll make sure to mention in that meeting about, you know, hey, how, how would this work from an AEP side, you know? Ideally, again, we're talking about the building, the, the, the building would, would essentially front the power, right? It's not going to be a separate power service. So example, House of Whiskey, they have a parklet, the power is essentially a secondary service coming from the metered House of Whiskey. Am I right?
Yes.
That's kind of the concept, so...
I, I understood some meant different, differently, so if you have power running to these lights, could that all, power also provide public power when you have events?
Yes.
That would be public.
Public power, yeah.
Public power, yeah, but if, but if, but if it's a parklet for House of Whiskey or a parklet for anybody else, the power should be coming from there.
So they would have an outlet?
Yeah. And, and, I'm sorry, and just the, the whole idea was, since we're already going to be tearing up sidewalks and doing some different things, it's very easy to put a conduit in there and, and put it back to the...
All right, that makes sense.
So if I may suggest a discussion on this, how the city would be leasing the space or licensing the space, because it can include, you know, the light as part of it, and, and so it's not a separate meter and it's not a separate...
Right, yeah.
Connection. So there's the potential for that as well, and, and I think that some discussion should be had with studios, if they're willing to do that.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it gets a little more complicated than just say, let's just put that in.
Yeah, I think the first step would be to be part of the business, and then down the road, it'd be a rental space that somebody can put a hot dog.
I mean, I mean, only way we can do, because those ornamental lights are our, but those doesn't have enough amps, so you can probably just put one plug in there, but they can do fryer and all kind of other stuff, that's not going to...
Yeah, so...
Like what we did in the park system, we run light, but those are the single power, can do...
I like the, the city...
They're running gas and it's portable.
The city of Georgetown has these short pedestals, I don't know if you guys have been there to downtown, they're all over, and they have multiple ones within the block, and they seem super practical, they don't, you can't even, you don't even look at them after a while, you know, it makes sense to have them. And they have their meter on that little pedestal, it's like two feet tall, maybe less.
Like the future.
Yes.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll, I'll keep some of that in mind as we initiate discussions with AEP, and I'll keep that, that idea in mind.
Do you all need any action on this item from us?
No.
Just, just acknowledge the, the, I guess, enhancements to the drawings?
Correct, I mean, we're, we're continuing, again, working on the 60% setup plans, so we're working on designs, gradings, details, and we're kind of working through that.
So you're working to bid in May?
Sure. Yeah, we're, I mean, we're, we're pushing, we're pushing as hard as we can to do that. A lot of it, I think, to be frank, from my perspective, is, you know, there's some of these coordinations that were still occurring, and, you know, if different ideas or concepts come up, you know, it could take a little time to get those incorporated into the plans, but we're, we're...
June-ish.
We're working on that, yes, sir, yeah, we're, we're working on finishing plans as quickly as we can. Now that we got kind of the direction, or like I said, some of these public comments that we got, we've already incorporated into our plan set, and, you know, if anything else comes up. Again, meeting with the, the different departments that we have still yet to meet with, if there's any comments that could, you know, delay something or change something drastically, then, you know, we'll definitely report back to the board and to everybody else on that. But right now, the game plan is that.
Mr. Chairman, Edward, one more thing. I know we have a lot of the water meters on the sidewalk, those are all steel, because we have some new plastic one, maybe meet with utility, at the same time, we replace those, because these are, some of them are very dangerous, it can...
Okay.
So we can put the box type, meter boxes.
Yeah, that's a good point. Again, our, our initial approach was going to be just to remove and reset whatever was there, just to make things simple, but that's a very good point.
But the utility already have those boxes, so we can provide the contractor, so they can remove it and put these...
Just remove and just put the new box, okay. Well, we'll keep that in mind for our construction details and for the cost estimate, so thank you for that.
Any other questions for the group? Thank you all very much. So for, for the, for the board, the EPO will be voting on the transportation alternative grant submission from, from, that we, that we made to them tomorrow, and hopefully that, that moves ahead and forward to, to an award to us. And that, if you recall, that includes, that's a million-dollar request, that includes sections of Salinas beginning at Water Street all the way to Iturvida, and then we also presented a small section, which was not really part of the request, but we threw it in there as a, as an informational item, in case we have some money for it, the area right south of, or right south of the courthouse on Salinas. So that does include utility relocation.
Yeah, how much did we, we put in there? Was it 25?
We put in a match of 25%, of 25% on design.
Design.
So their, their money is going to be part of construction money.
Will you need us to, anybody, organizations, somebody to attend?
Yeah, sure.
You planning to attend?
I'll be there tomorrow, 1:30 or here.
So Main Street, board members...
Main Street, if you can join our consulting team or representatives of the team, I don't know what kind of questions they'll be, but it's pretty straightforward, you know, the request is pretty...
Do they have a public comment, like, or is it, do you speak on the item?
Yes, they, they do have a public comment as well.
Okay.
I, I think you're, you're letting me know, but yeah, they...
Well, okay.
Yeah. So there's only, there's, as I understand it, there's two applicants, and there's sufficient money for both. It has a maximum cap of a million to each, so there should be, you know, I, I think we, we, we have a good shot.
What time?
1:30.
1:30.
1:30 here.
Thank you.
Here. All right.
And, and, Mr. Chairman, on part of the city side, we applied for the bus shelter, and I think there is one within that area also.
Okay, great, great.
We applied for a couple of bus shelters, and one, one of them, I think, is on that area.
Good, good, thank you. I guess I'm going to leave that, that item at that. I have other things, but I think we can, we can talk about them at the next meeting. Anything else on this item six? If there is not, then we'll move on to, no action on that item. Item seven is discussion, possible action regarding invoices submitted by Able City and KCI Technologies as presented. You have the Able City, you had those in, in the email packet that was sent out, and then you also have the KCI that was, may have made it as a secondary email or was shared with you before the meeting here. And I saw that Ramon Chavez, engineer, city engineer approved it ahead of this meeting, so...
Motion to approve item number seven?
It's been moved to approve item seven as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Castillo, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any against? None, motion passes. Motion to adjourn at 6:16?
The move.
It's been moved by Mr. Noado, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mier, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any against? None, motion passes. Thank you very much, enjoy your, your Valentine's dinner.